So good morning and welcome to the beginning of City Council's Budget Hearings. My name is Daniel Lovell and I chair the Committee on Finance and Law. This morning, we're going to be hearing and doing a review of the Office of Management and Budget as well discussing the Community Development Trust Fund. I'm going to turn it over to our Director, Peter McDevitt. We will get started.
Thanks, Councilman Lovell. I am Peter McDevitt. I am Council's Budget Director. So today, we're going to talk about OMB, the CD Team, Community Development Team, and we'll eventually shift to the Equipment Leasing Authority. So starting with the Office of Management and Budget, the mission of OMB is to ensure the effective and efficient use of available resources in order to sustain and deliver the quality services to residents of the city of Pittsburgh. A quick overview of the department, it's organized into the following units: Management, Capital and Asset Management, Community Development, Block Grants, or is that just Community Development, and then Operating and Special Revenue and Procurement. There is a total of thirty-two full-time positions in OMB. You'll note that there is a four percent salary increase for Directors and Chiefs, which is to counteract just the two percent raise they received in 2023. There are upgrades for Management Analysts and Executive Assistants. There's an upgrade of one Senior Budget Analyst to Capital Budget Manager, and a swap of one Sourcing Specialist for Sustainable Procurement Specialist. So overall, that's just an increase of 2.3 percent, and all of those positions are non-union. Moving on to a summary of non-personnel changes, overall, there's just under $200,000 increase in non-personnel charges. Some of that includes a $431,000 decrease in Property Services that is partially due to the decrease in 412 Boulevard of the Allies and 200 Ross Street property maintenance. There is an $800,000 increase in Supplies. A lot of that goes to added costs for fuel and added cost to Transdev, non-target cost. Transdev is the new name of First Vehicle Services, who maintains the city's fleet. And there is a $200,000 decrease in miscellaneous spending. Part of that is $50,000 decrease in RACP fees and $150,000 match for Riverlife Dock Project, which is budgeted in 2023, is not in 2024. In Capital, the CD Administration, CDBG Administration, there's $244,000, about $245,000 in CBG Funds. Emergency Solutions Grants has $1.2 million in HUD funding. The Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS or HOPWA has $1.1 million in HUD funding. The Neighborhood Economic Development Program has $720,000 in CD funding. Personnel Cost in CD Team is $1.1 million. And Housing Counseling, there's $100,000 in CDBG funding. And then, I'm just also going to go through trust funds real quick. The Bridge Asset Management Program Trust Fund was created in 2022 for setting the conditions for the deposit of funding into the account and expenditures of said funds. The funds deposited in said trust fund shall be used for the costs related to the implementation of the program. Moving on to the Facilities Trust Fund. The Facilities Trust Fund was created in 2015, and the funds and proceeds received from the disposition or leases of the facilities and the expenditures will go right back into the maintenance and capital investment and acquisition and disposition of city-owned facilities. The Lead Safety Trust Fund, the expenditures for those funds should be related to the implementation and enforcement of Lead Safe Ordinance. The South Side Parking Enhancement District Trust Fund, the description of that, it was introduced in 2016, nine months after the passage of the Parking Enhancement District Trust Fund Ordinance. It was originally in Public Safety, and now it is housed within OMB, and the expenditures in that, the trust fund shall be established within the Department of Management and Budget may only be used in order to provide public safety resources, public works resources, needed infrastructure improvements, and parking enforcement for the South Side Flats Parking Enhancement Districts. And that's all I have for OMB. I'm going to shift quickly to CD, and then we'll invite Kelly up. I'll make room for him. The Community Development Trust Fund, the mission of the Community Development Trust Fund was to establish, to facilitate, the receipts and dispersments of the programs that are funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The fund's support activities that improve the quality of life for low and moderate income persons living in the city of Pittsburgh, as well as administrative costs. The CD Office is funded fully by the Community Development Trust Fund, and the revenues come from HUD, and all expenditures are project-specific to individual contract agreements as indicated in the Capital Budget. Quick position summary, there's a total of eleven full-time positions. There's a decrease of one Senior Manager, a decrease of Fiscal and Contracting Coordinator, one less Senior Program Coordinator, and one less Program Coordinator, with the addition of one Environmental Review Coordinator and two Program Coordinators. And there is both non-union and AFSMI 2719 positions in that budget. And then, you'll see a list of capital projects, so all of those costs coming out of the trust fund are listed as capital projects, and it totals $13.5 million. We kind of went through all of them, not all of them, but many of them in the previous under OMB. But just to call some individual ones out, City Council Public Service Grants are now rehoused in the CD Trust Fund, as well as Mayor's Public Service Grants for $100,000. And the Bedford Dwellings Choice Neighborhoods is $5.6 million in there. And with that, I'll turn it over to OMB and CD.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to our Director, Paulak, and then we can go down the line.
Sure. Jake Paulak, Deputy Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer.
Lenea Lincoln, Assistant Director for the Operating and Special Revenue.
David Hutchinson, Assistant Director for Capital and Asset Management.
And Kelly Russell, Assistant Director for Community Development.
Thank you, Chairman Lovell. As Director McDevitt mentioned or outlined in his summary, changes to the budget for the Office of Management and Budget and its Community Development Team are not significantly different than what was proposed in 2020, for the 2023 current budget year. A few small position adjustments, as well as some changes to things like fuel costs and vehicle maintenance costs that are associated simply with changes in market conditions and the need to anticipate higher costs for those commodities or services in the coming year. So on the whole, this is not an area where we're projecting significant change, and if there's any questions about OMB, the OMB budget itself, we'd happily take them, but before we go there, I'd just ask Chief Cornell and others if they have anything they want to add.
The only thing I would add is that we do expect close collaboration with Councilwoman Gross and her office with the Mobility Infrastructure Trust Fund that was passed a few weeks ago with City Council, related in similar fashion to the South Side Parking Enhancement District. So we know we will need to work together to get that fund implemented and active in partnership with the Director of Finance as well. Team, do you have anything to add?
Kelly, anything just generally about the staff and your team?
Well, I just was going to talk about the public service grants, going back to the City Council, and just say we'll be working with everybody's office to make sure those grants are out in a timely fashion.
I'll start at the end of the table, Councilman Warwick. If you have questions, thoughts, concerns?
Sure. So I guess just going through, so for the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, what organizations?
That goes to the Jewish Healthcare Foundation.
Okay. And do we know how many people are living with HIV?
That is information I can get back to you, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. I'm just curious about that. So yeah, just in terms of the CDBG projects, so yeah, so this is all HUD money. Can you explain just for the council budgets, the council public service grants, what is the process going to be?
There will be an application process that will happen later on in 2024. That will be, last year, we ran that through Engage PGH Organizations. We'll have about four or five weeks to submit applications. The applications will be reviewed by our departments for eligibility. Those applications that are determined to be eligible will be forwarded to the council offices and to the Mayor's, the Mayor's office as well, and it will be up to those departments to make those decisions.
Okay. And you'll let us know ahead of time so we can make sure that all our organizations get their applications?
When we relate, just like we had that conversation past week, when we, when we release the application, I'll be making sure to email every department or every council office to let them know these applications are alive, so you can share with our people. And then, we also have a mailing list with over 1,100 individuals through our webpage as well.
Okay.
Or I should say Organizations, excuse me.
And as far, and as far as other grants, OMB manages the application for those, too. Can you walk me through how that works a little bit?
Sure. So the Grants Team of, there are three staff members in OMB who manage the Grants Process, but in close collaboration with departments who are often the ones initiating the request. So we have staff who review notices of fund availability or NOFA's, that's what the federal government typically, you know, how they release information about grants that are available. State grants are advertised in a variety of ways. So we certainly keep a proactive eye on what might be available, and then route information about relevant grant opportunities to departments to, for them to determine whether they have projects or initiatives that would be, you know, aligned or potentially successful applications. There are also instances where a, someone elsewhere in the city apparatus identifies an opportunity and then approaches the Grants Team about pursuing it. The Team provides sort of coordination and technical expertise in ensuring that, you know, we're able to produce a successful application, as not every, individual departments certainly have subject matter expertise and project management expertise around the projects they're conducting, but not necessarily the application drafting, you know, support. Or now, over the, a little more than a year, for a little more than a year, we've had also a post-award compliance Team Member Specialist who is able to ensure that we're adequately following up on and submitting the necessary reports for all of the grants we do receive, to make sure we remain in compliance and don't lose funding that way. Ultimately, all applications for a grant require my approval as the Director of the Office, just to ensure that we, you know, do have the necessary matching funds or other capacity to minister and take on the grant. That's typically, once the Grants Office has, has signed off, that, you know, we have a complete application, a good chance of success, and the operating or capital team has indicated that matching funds are available, I approve, as a matter of course, those applications. And then, again, we continue to have the administrative process. But the Grants themselves are, you know, once we receive funding, they're appropriately loaded into accounts within the departments or capital budget lines where the work will be done. So we don't manage the projects that are grant-funded, just the administrative process of seeking, receiving, and handling grant money.
Okay. So if departments are coming to you, like, say a department comes to you with ten grants that they want to apply for, do you, is it just based on whether or not we have matching funds, or, you know, like those sort of nuts and bolts criteria, or is there a bandwidth issue about, like, how many grants?
Yeah.
Can be, can the team of three apply for?
It's not, I don't believe we've ever projected an opportunity simply because we didn't have the bandwidth to submit an application. Sometimes, we've determined that our likelihood of success, given other applications or recent awards from the same program, mean that it's unlikely that we'll get a future, a further award until we've expended a previous grant, and so we determine that everyone's collective effort, not just the Grants Team, but of the, also the subject matter experts, would not be well put into that effort at a particular given time. We know the history of programs where we're unlikely to get a award a year after we got a similar award, right? So it's a bit more than, it's not a cut-and-dry checklist, but it's not, I don't think we're a bottleneck, the Grants Team is not a bottleneck in pursuing grants that are, for which we have a compelling case to make that aligns with the grant criteria, and the historical context, right, suggests that we're well positioned to receive it.
Okay. And so, and is, is there any, so at the, at the start of the year, does the Grants Team, I mean, are they just sort of constantly applying for grants, like, week to week? Or is there like a plan, like, is there sort of a, like, okay, this year, or the first half of the year, or the first quarter, we're going to apply for these grant, like, sort of a plan?
It's a little bit of both. There are opportunities that come up consistently every year at the same time. We have those worked into a massive calendar. You know, Q1, we know we're going to go after this grant and this grant. Q2 could be different, 3, 4, et cetera. A lot of times, it really depends on when the Notice of Funding Opportunity is released and what the deadline is. You know, some of them, you could have three, four, or five months of lead time to work on a large application and refine it and make it the strongest application it can be. Sometimes, the notice is released a week before a deadline, and we're kind of working late a little bit to get that in and make sure it works. So it's a mixture of both. We do have kind of strategy brainstorming at the beginning of every year.
Because I'm sort of interested in, I mean, I think that maybe the public doesn't appreciate how much, I mean, how, how much grant funding can drive what we do in the city, right? And so, and I know that my team has talked, so we're looking at legislation to sort of give council a heads-up about what grants are being applied, not at the end, like, I understand that, you know, once we've accepted the grant, like, we vote on that, but a lot of the time, that's too late, and there's sort of this notion of, oh, we left money on the table. But I think it's helpful for council members to know ahead of time, you know, because maybe something is or isn't a priority in the community. So, you know, if we're, if we're applying for a grant for Project X, but really what the community wants to focus on in that particular year is Project Y, then it'd be nice to be able to kind of direct the departments that way via the grants, right? So that we're not sort of applying for grants, and then pursuing projects that aren't necessarily priorities, just because we got a grant to do it. So does that all sound reasonable?
It does. The one, I guess, just an additional layer of complexity there, though, I would just add, is that there, if it's, if it's indeed, you know, a project that's not desired at all by the community or some situation like that, then, then of course, the case there is very clear. I think there is some gray in between, right, where something might be third or fourth priority and not the highest priority, but the only project that meets the criteria of the grant opportunity. And then, I think, a conversation about whether it makes sense to pursue funding for something that's in the middle of the priority list, but something for which funds are available, still does make sense to pursue if the highest priority project is not something for which there are grant funds to be had, right? And so I think there's a balancing act to be achieved there.
Yeah. So I mean, I guess that's kind of where it gets a little, yeah, a little, because, you know, with the departments, of course, a given department can have kind of its own internal priorities or, or priorities of, you know, this advocacy group or that advocacy group. So they're kind of, that's why I'm kind of wondering, like, I mean, I know that the state releases sort of a big book of grants every year, and I don't, does the federal government, I mean, there's a lot of grants, right? So it's like you do ultimately have to pick and choose what you're going for, and...
Yeah. They also do, both at the state and federal level, make changes to grant criteria frequently and to timelines, right? So yes, it's not, it's not, it's not an entirely predictable landscape, right? I mean, we often find out about changes in criteria mid-year when a program hasn't, you know, a program that always opens in July, or, you know, gets to be August, then we haven't seen it open yet, and we're sort of scratching our heads, wondering what's going to happen. And then it opens in October with revised criteria that we see for the first time with a week to apply, because a change in Secretary of the Department overseeing the program has a different vision, right? And then, so yes, we can anticipate a lot of this at the beginning, and that's what you heard Patrick referring to, we try to do that, to the extent we can, but it is always a bit of a moving target as well.
Yeah. So I mean, even if, and again, I didn't want to put, you know, like, doing reports, it can be a lot of extra work, I definitely appreciate it, but, you know, maybe every quarter, just to see, like, okay, what are the grants that are being applied for in my district? Like, okay, this, that. And then that would give council members, I think, an opportunity to say, hey, you know, look, I have this stretch of sidewalk that's a mess, can you look for something for this, right? Or can you, you know, or I have whatever, just some community project that they'd really like to get done, can you look for a grant for that? That would be helpful, I think. Anyway, okay. I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll expand on the, the grants. We had one recently with East Ohio Street, and I guess I'm not so much, I understand where you're coming from, but I was curious, like, in that situation, we, there wasn't money allocated to it, we fixed that, moved some funds that were already in the district to make that happen, to apply for those. And that kind of made me wonder when a project is, you know, when we have commitment on a project, or, you know, that it is, it is started, it is ongoing, I'm not sure how on your end, you know, you classify it as, like, okay, this is something we should, you know, be aware of at whenever, you know, grant, grant opportunities come, come down the line. So I'm being a little vague, because I wasn't planning on asking that question, but I'm, I'm curious on, you know, what the strategy is there, because there could be missed opportunities, and I just don't want to miss those opportunities.
The general rule, and it's, this, as we were just discussing, the situation is far more complicated than this, but, but as, I guess, an orientation or an outlook, right? We always prefer to seek grant funding to complete the funding stack for, you know, already active projects. You know, let's say, we're, we have a project with a funding gap, right, that has opened up since it was initially authorized, grant funding to close that gap is always sort of preferred, or a project that may be fully funded in a future budget year where we can secure grant funds to complete the funding of the project, and then reallocate the funds, the future funds that have been pledged to it, to support other projects, to keep, you know, other projects moving that might not be ones that are eligible for grant funds. That produces the most shovel-ready projects and the ones that can, you know, proceed most quickly, and it's not becoming a bandwidth concern for the teams administering the projects, because if we spin up a brand-new project solely on the basis of, of grant funding while also continuing to support other projects, right now, we just have a proliferation of projects that are hard to juggle. So we like, we certainly look to those types of opportunities first, but, but there's no, there's no single answer to that question. I think, I think something that is always a challenge, and maybe, I think this might get to the heart of your question, Councilman, is sometimes, you know, we look at projects in phases, right, and the successful completion of a phase of the project does not necessarily imply that the next phase of the project is funded, right? And so we can, in situations where that comes up, and a grant opportunity might become available to initiate Phase Two or Three, or, you know, of a project that had multiple phases, then we can look to move the funds around to produce the match, even if they weren't yet programmed.
And one thing I'd add, too, is when we are committing a match, it's our accounting best practice to actually commit that, those funds, right? We don't want to run into a situation where a grant match has been committed using a pot of funds over here, and then we're actually committing that, again, we don't want to double commit and, and, you know, end up in a situation where all the grants are awarded, and now all of a sudden, we don't have enough funds to actually match the project, if that makes sense. Dave, do you want to explain that a little bit better?
No, just to hammer home Jake's point, we do try to go after projects that are, that are fully funded for a number of reasons. One, it's, it's our best shot, it's our most competitive projects in the sense that we've developed them the most. We may even have some public engagement that we've done that we can document.
Wait, so I'm hearing, I just want to stop you for a second. So I'm hearing that there's a threshold of funds that are already in the project that you're looking at?
No.
Because you're just talking about, like, kind of end money?
No, no, no. It could happen either way. There could, there could already be money in the project, or if we're going to submit the grant application, then we need to move funds to the project.
Yeah, we did that. Yeah.
Correct, correct.
And that is, we did it.
Yes.
I guess the question is just, you know, is there, is there a lie of spreadsheet where you're tracking, like, okay, here is, here are the projects that, you know, we met with dummy, you know, we're supportive, council's supportive, like, we're all moving forward, dummy's working on it, and then, like, you know, and I'm just wondering if those meetings are happening, if the spreadsheet exists.
And in, in effect, that's the Capital Budget Deliverables, right? So if, when we're talking East Ohio, there's already some funds there, we're able to move money to get the additional match we may need to make the, the grant project whole, based on the, the grant application, that dollar amount. So we could have pieces put together, but it might not be sufficient to have the entire amount there to submit the grant and move towards a successful.
Okay. Yeah, because we did have some, yeah.
Correct.
All right. And I guess grants come about, and you don't have, you know, you don't know exactly how much that grant's going to go for, what the match will be.
I think oftentimes, just the lag of time between the application period, it can take nine months to a year before we're awarded that.
Yeah.
Which, if we had a match set aside that we thought would cover any of the differences, the prices could have increased by then, which, then we have to allocate some additional funds to that.
Yeah. That's, that's complicated, and I appreciate all the work that, you know, you were able to, to do there. Is there a line item for that, where we're like, similar to, you know, similar to, we're talking about the union negotiations, and, you know, I think, and I asked a question yesterday, it was brought up, about that that money lies in HR, there's a line item in HR to, you know, even though it shows zero percent for, you know...
Sure.
You know, current negotiations, is there a lot, or is that all just like, no, that's just in, in each individual project?
Right. So there is no explicit line in the Capital Budget, or the Operating Budget for that matter, that says we are setting aside funds for grant matches.
Gotcha.
They are, they are chosen and moved around internally from existing projects.
Okay. All right. Thanks. That's helpful.
And the other thing I would add on, Assistant Director Lincoln, is that oftentimes, we apply for a grant for $2 million and may only receive 1.2 as the award. And then we have to figure out what we do. Do we phase it down? Do we find other sources?
Yeah.
So it's a lot of moving pieces.
All right. I just have some technical questions here on numbers. You know, we go, I'm looking at the sheet here, and we're going from, well, let's stay on grants, I'll work backwards. So grants, that's going up 82 percent, so, you know, it's going up, I don't know, 230,000. What, what grants are those?
Are you looking at the CD sheet or the OMB sheet?
That's going down in the miscellaneous grants line, that was, there was $150,000 set aside for the Riverlife Grant Match.
Okay.
And then another $50,000 for...
For RACP fees.
Yeah.
All right. In parentheses means it's going down.
Yeah. That's the redevelopment assistance capital program grants. We partner with the URA, they're the ones who actually administer the grants for us.
Okay, so it's going down.
There's little fees that council has approved. This year, we had to kind of catch up from prior year awards, but moving forward, we budgeted a smaller amount in anticipation of, I believe, receiving up to four each year we could afford.
And the, the reason this is a relatively small line item is very few grants move through the Office of Management and Budget specifically, so that those fees that Patrick was mentioning constitute a pretty significant portion of what you'll usually see in this line item. The reason that the Riverlife Grant moved through here is that it was, the city was not actually participating in the construction or management of the project, Riverlife was rebuilding something that was then going to become city property, so it made the most sense to route it through the OMB Budget rather than any department, since no department was managing the project. And I believe the agreements with the state that, around ownership had to run through us, so that's why we put it there, but typically, you won't see much grant funding in OMB, because we don't actually run projects.
And generally, that, that line would cover, sometimes there's a $100 application fee to submit the grant, so those, that funding would come from there.
And Property Services, Land and Buildings, I'm just curious on that line, what?
Sure.
Sure.
So, um, Like, what are we talking about with the land and buildings?
Two major properties. One is 200 Ross Street. You know, as we look to dispossess 200 Ross, we've been paying building maintenance for years, so that would, would decrease. And the second one is the 402 Boulevard of the Allies, building improvement costs for both operating and capital. That decrease, I mean, we will still be paying those. I believe an agreement should be coming up to council soon to extend that, that relationship. But we use 2023 as a, a catch-up time to, you know, make sure that all of our prior year deposits were there. So that number decreases just because we don't have to catch up next year.
But what is the difference between maintenance and land and buildings, then? Like, what are the differences between those lines?
Sorry, let me look at what you're asking, but the, okay, so maintenance is going to be paying for maintenance on city-owned properties. In that case, this is for fleet. This is our fleet contract for, for known scheduled maintenance. As those are the, it's city property, but it's work being done on the city property, these assets. And then land and buildings themselves, correct. And then land and buildings themselves is the building.
Maintenance line. And then, sorry, go ahead, land buildings?
And then land and buildings would be things done specifically to buildings.
Like you're talking about 402 or-
Property management, yes.
And that goes down? Why does it go down again?
We had to catch up this year on some prior year costs that we couldn't fully make because of COVID.
Is the, is the cleaning contract in that line?
The cleaning contract is split up based on the departments who use it, right? So police has a line item, Public Works has a line item, and Parks has line items. And what are the-
I mean, for 402.
For 402, that would be part of the, the property management line, because that is a joint venture with the Housing Authority and the URA.
We don't own the building entirely. It's, it's a condominium, so-
And that line exists where?
Land and buildings. Part of that land and buildings funding.
Part of that.
Our contribution goes towards a, a much larger pool of funds.
Yes, there's a, a management committee, I believe it's called, of representatives of the owners. And they receive payments from the three owners and then manage those funds for building-wide services. It doesn't make sense for us to have one cleaning company servicing the floors that we occupy, and the Housing Authority have a different provider, and the, you already have a different provider. So a joint management committee, I might be getting the name of it wrong, but that's what the function that it serves, manages those things together.
And then on, thank you. And then on health insurance and other benefits here, this is the, you see health insurers, is this just for the OMB employees?
Correct. Those are the personal costs just for OMB employees.
And that, all that other stuff would lie in HR?
That's correct. We did see some savings there this year on the municipal side. On, yeah, on the municipal side, which is, was helpful in putting together the overall budget, but that's for the HR hearing, not for-
Yeah, I was going to start asking questions when that, but-
Director Kellerman's in Louisville. I don't know if we want to call her in.
You know, OMB is, you know, you're like the all-encompassing, you know, I get confused sometimes, I'm like,
Yeah, so, so what you're seeing reflected here only, only speaks to the staff in, in the office. I am, I think we are generally happy to answer questions about the budget in general, not just OMB, but perhaps after all the questions about the office specifically, or answer just to keep everything straight, if that's-
And I would say, in terms of citywide costs, OMB does budget for fleet costs, like we said, fuel, and the, the 402 and the 200 Ross payments. But beyond that, OMB itself is not responsible for anything citywide. You know, finance has pension, HR has workers, some workers' comp, legacy benefits, but for the most part, OMB is OMB itself.
So you want me to save if I have an overall budget question for?
If that's, if that's all right with Councilman.
For like, another round, or?
Why don't we, why don't we go to Councilwoman Gross? I know she's online.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Councilwoman Gross, is there anything, questions you had?
Hi, thanks, thanks for noticing that I was here. I appreciate that. I was just about to send you a message. Hi, everybody. I appreciate you being here today, and sorry I'm remote. I was glad that council members asked about grants. And I think this is, feels like my third year of saying the same thing, which is that this is a unique moment historically, kind of once-in-a-lifetime chance to compete for federal funds. So Director Polak, you already said the same thing last year, and I said it, I think, the year before when you, it was a different OMB director. But that, I, I don't believe we've increased the staffing for grants. And I did miss part of the beginning of the meeting, so correct me if I'm wrong. And I think what I said last year, and what I also continue to see this year, is that while before this moment, post-COVID, you know, when we were before COVID, and there was not as many competitive federal grants in specific subject areas, right? So what's currently happening is like, the Department of Transportation is bringing out massive amounts of money that cities are eligible for, but have to compete for. Even the forestry, you know, Department, Federal Forestry is putting out competitive grants that cities are eligible for, but have to compete for. And HUD, same thing, right? And so it's kind of going federal department by federal department. And so while five or six years ago, it was, it felt adequate, that we had good, really good staffing, I'm really happy with our grants staffing in OMB, this is a different moment, where there's so much more that we could be going for. And I heard, or, or, one of the people at the table say that there's, our normal procedure is to say, oh, we have these projects, and there's a gap. Let's look for the grants to fill that gap. I feel like we should be maybe being a little bit more aggressive, like, looking at our entire five-year forecast of projects and looking to see what's eligible now, even before the projects have gotten started. Because it's, this money's going to go away, but it's there now, but we have to compete for it. So maybe you want to speak to that?
Just to, to the earlier part of your question, within the three-year period that you were just describing, the increase, there has been increased staffing in the Grants Office. It was two people at the beginning of that period who are both handling grant submissions, as well as post-award compliance. There is now a post-award compliance specialist handling that, and the other two are focused almost exclusively on pursuing awards. So staffing has increased, but it is still a small team. Yeah, as relates to your wider point, I, I agree that it's, we, we would not be successful now or at any time in only looking at completing the funding for existing projects. I think that that's a, a key component of our approach, because they make some of the most competitive applications when there's already extensive funding and a lot of work done, right? For thinking of capital projects, designs may be complete, right? So I only bring that up as a priority area, because those projects are the most developed and thus the easiest, not just the easiest, but the most likely to be successful applications. But we do, of course, pursue other opportunities beyond that when, when the moment is right. And we do look ahead, not just to the projects, when we say started, I don't, we don't mean already underway, right? But projects that are in the capital plan anywhere that have had funding dedicated to them.
And I thought that was, I was completely compatible with that approach again several years ago. But when I'm reading the federal notice of funds available, which I do, I'm really excited about some of the funding streams that are out there, that didn't used to be out there and won't always be out there. And what I'm, I'd like to hear is that we are also adding some people who can seek grants that are subject matter experts for our departments. And so I kind of didn't say that in my first comment, but that, well, so we've, we've added a compliance officer who can do the reporting. There's a lot of, if the public doesn't know, receiving the grant is not the end of the work, right? There's years of reporting to whoever was the funder to make, to ensure to them that you've completed the work within the scope of the grant that you were awarded. But that in seeking these awards, they're, they're more specialized, there's so much, especially federal funding that's out there, but there's real subject matter content that we shouldn't expect the same two people to know across multiple city departments. So what can we do about that?
I agree with that 100%, and our, our grants officers are really facilitating the, the development and submission of these applications. Each, each application has a subject matter expert within the department embedded with them to, to really take the technical questions. I also know that at least three different groups within the city, Planning, OMB, and the Mayor's Office, have all combed through, for example, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act, the Inflation Reduction Act. So we've, we have a list of all of these new opportunities, ones that we may or may not be eligible for. But it really is a collaborative effort with our departments. We've done a ton of work right now, in particular with the Mayor's Office and the Sustainability Team and Planning, to move through a lot of the Department of Energy applications. We were awarded Reconnecting Communities from the Department of Transportation from Manchester this year. So, so it is happening, Councilwoman, and we certainly can, can improve it more.
This conversation, I'm glad to hear it, but I think we just need to dovetail it with what Councilwoman Warwick and I have both been talking about, which is making sure that you don't do several years of work, and then come to the council table, and we're like, no, we did not want you to focus on that. We're not toward it all. So let's get together on what our council's priorities from what we're hearing from our constituents, to make sure that the city departments aren't kind of going off in a different direction, so that we can, at the front of the conversation, get in line. So I appreciate that. Thank you. And I am kind of scrolling through the, the handout from our budget office. I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll let other council members speak. If we get back around to kind of like, the OMB role in the rest of the budget, I may chime back in. But that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The only other, the other example I would think speaks to what Councilwoman Gross is, is hinting at in terms of the various, yes, you have the Grants Office, but it's being, going across the board is the RACE grant that we recently had, that requires a lot of different hands to touch it, provide input into it. But also wasn't for one specific project, but captures the essence of a lot of things we're actually trying to get done. And is an opportunity to then work with inside the community. So I think that's just another sort of example. My questions are more general in nature, sort of just generally about the budget. One, and this is just in sort of an accounting question, I don't believe there's any technical format any budget has to follow. But I am just curious as to when we list out transfers, while we also don't show them as expenditures.
The way, I would, I think, the way in which we represent those in the budget now is consistent with historic practice, which is, you know, that continuity of our accounting over time is consistent with, you know, an audit trail, really is, is a major portion of that, right? That, that we're producing budgets and financial statements in a similar format year over year for the purposes of having like comparisons to make in, in auditing, is one, one part of that. The way in which we, we present this is consistent with GAAP standards and has been, been the city's practice for, for how to account for those funds. Patrick, you may want to add to that.
From a practical standpoint, if they were marked as expenditures, that would frankly unbalance the budget is a major consideration. So we would have to then make further cuts to other, other places as well. You know, and, and the transfer to, to Pago on the capital budget, it's, it's not really related to the monies that are coming in that year. It's, it's really what's in the fund balance. That could be left over from the prior year, that's carried over. So it's something that, that moves through, that aspect, as opposed to part of the appropriated general fund budget.
Okay. The latter portion of balancing the budget is, was my assumption, but, so just, just curious. And it, again, this is sort of high level, but you mentioned the fund balance. So in the out years, we get very close to our set limit of 10%. And even with the debt cliff, right? So we get rid of the debt cliff, but we're still getting close to that 10% number. Just any thoughts in general, or obviously it's a concern, and I would probably argue as a city, we need to begin really thinking through where additional revenue is going to be coming from in those years. Because as noted with gas, as you've already noted in other expenses, just running the city on a whole is more expensive, right? And so we can't budget in the same manner. So I'm just curious, your general thoughts on getting that close to the fund balance, as well as general thoughts on potential ways to raise additional revenue?
That fund balance, the fund balance percentage is an important indicator. It's also a lagging indicator. You see it reach that lowest point, I think, two years after.
Twenty-eight, I think.
The last year of the plan.
The last year of the plan, yeah. So, so, but I'm saying, two years after we retire that significant amount of debt, but because the fund, we would have been making fewer transfers the years prior, right? You see the, the, that impact kind of continue a few years before it would be projected to go back up as we're making larger reserve transfers, right? So, so it's, it's directly related to, to the '25 and '26 period. You just see it, it ends up hitting the books in that way on a slight delay. You know, obviously, the, the, the higher the fund balance and the more robust it is, the better for the city. And we always want to see a high fund balance as possible. I think, if you think to where the city was in its financial position in 2020 and 2021, right? When revenue fell off dramatically and the impacts of the, the COVID mandated closures was really having a very difficult impact on the budget. A necessary, for the time, choice was made to refinance debt that would have to be paid in those years to push those payments out to 2026. That's creating the cliff that we're thinking, that we're referring to now. ARPA came into the situation. We've essentially spread, you know, the, the pain, if you will, of, of those closures, the quarantine period. Instead of being in 18 months in 2020 and 2021, we've spread it over six years, right? And with the infusion of ARPA in the middle of that, lessened also the total impact. So this is, 2025 and 2026 are kind of the delayed fiscal consequence of that period, but much, it's much less of a sharp blow than it would have been had it been experienced at that time, when everything else was also shut down. So, yeah, the, the, we don't see, it's not a structural deficit, it's not even a structural shortfall, but it will, it will, it will be a challenge to the fund balance, but not one that's outside of the parameters, is our perspective on that. As it relates to growing revenue, of course, we continue to pursue and have seen early, but positive signs from the review of the tax-exempt status of, of nonprofit or claimed nonprofit property. We received payments this year from some of the parcels where we were successful in those challenges, and folks have begun making payments. Of course, as you know, another round of those appeals will be, a much larger one, will be launched in March, because we will have completed a review of the 90% of properties that were not reviewed in time for the first wave. We anticipate that to be productive. We continue conversations also with other, you know, large nonprofit landowners about alternatives to that approach to securing funding. Restoring property to the tax rolls is an important piece of that. You saw, you heard in the Mayor's Budget address that we've dramatically increased the number of properties that are pursuing, going to public sale. When those properties are sold, they will, they go from being a liability to the city and that they have an unpaid tax. They're not paying taxes and have unpaid tax balances to paying taxes, and in most cases, in one shape or another, clearing those liens. So that will help. That's, that's incremental. That's not going to be one big slug of money, right? But, but every, every little bit there counts. We've also increased the number of clean and liens we do, which then places those liens as a future potential revenue source, but also, more to the point, prevents the deterioration of those properties, so that if they continue to progress through that cycle, they're in stronger place to be repositioned. And then, of course, the, you know, again, it will, we will really see the revenue impacts of this on a two, three-year delay. But all of the investment, which is moving now through the URA for reinvestment in property and housing stock, you know, will then ultimately result after that work is completed over the next couple of years in, in property tax payments. So I think those are the ways in which we're envisioning the investments being made now in city services and, and re-initiating, right, our, our kind of, all of the above approach to land recycling, paying dividends down the line, right? We're, we're doing public sales through the Finance Department with this council's support. We're now beginning to move properties through the land bank. You know, the URA is active with ARPA funds in other ways. You know, the U R A is active with ARPA funds in other ways. That's just on the real estate side. The downtown conversion program should secure and hopefully over time strengthen property tax, commercial property tax revenue downtown. It'll take a while certainly for that impact to be fully realized, but we're making those investments in the future of our, our revenue model.
Okay, thank you.
If I may too, to go back to the, the five-year plan, the benefit of having the five-year plan is that we can see this now, right? And that's a reaction to leaving Act 47, this, well, prior iterations of this council codified a lot of fiscal best practices. And, and we expect things to change by the time we get to 2028, but this is the reaction to what we know now, our best available knowledge, but we certainly expect that to look a lot better when we get there. We can, we can adapt to it knowing that it's there now.
Sure. Yes, it's our best guess.
Right.
Yeah, understood. You mentioned challenges to, to the nonprofit status, but similarly, our new county executive -elect has talked about doing reassessments. I mentioned to my colleagues yesterday, I thought that this body should absolutely encourage and support and so sent over a will of council to encourage her to do so. But along those same lines, we as a city at one point, some years ago, used to be, used to follow our own challenges to assessments. Any consideration to adding someone back under, I believe it was in the finance department to do that work? Because essentially my thinking is that that would pay for itself, so it wouldn't be a new expenditure.
I don't believe Director Ghulab believes she needs additional staffing to be, to be in, to be able to do that. And I think, but I think the answer is yes, we would be prepared even with current staffing in the finance department to reinitiate challenges, and then she's been looking towards that.
Yeah, and she brought it up to us after her conversation with you. I think that would take some time to do the research and dig into be able to challenge in perhaps 2025, you know, a future year. That way we'd also have time to work potential increases in real estate into the revenue forecast to kind of balance out the additional cost of a staff member.
May I just briefly on your point about reassessment? I think, I think that reassessment is necessary in, in a county that has not done one in such a long period of time, and particularly given the methodology, right? That, that is just as a, as a question of tax fairness, right? That's really important. I will note just for, for everyone's knowledge, and I believe most council members are aware of this, but for the wider public as well, a reassessment comes with an anti-windfall provision, right? So, so we, we would have to adjust down the tax mileage accordingly to prevent the revenue growth coming from reassessment. I believe it's capped at 3%. So it would be a modest infusion, but, but not, I, I think there's a perception, right, that reassessment would result in, you know, much, much higher tax burdens and some, and then a huge influx in cash. It's, it's, it's more complicated than that. It would still be valuable to us from our new perspective. I'd argue it's more important just from a tax fairness perspective.
Agreed. From a tax fairness perspective, my, and I've always said this, we should reassess every two years. But nonetheless, it still could be a potential $4 million, $5 million infusion, which would go a long way within our capital budget.
Completely agree.
Lastly for me, and I'll turn it back over to members, you just mentioned ARPA, and so I know members are always have a general concern. How much of our ARPA dollars are currently not under contract?
I believe that's about 18% as of the end of July, when we, was the report I'm thinking of, Patrick. I think we've filed one since then.
Let me pull it up, but all of the funds have been allocated by council in a line item. There are still some moving towards contracting, you know, in addition to the amount that will support, is expected to support the, the 2024 operating budget. I know we're overdue for a, a regular council update, so I certainly would be willing to come in and have that discussion with, at the table.
We have, so, so as of the end of, of June, 50% of the funds have been expended. 18% were under contract but not expended. 14% constituted that 2024 operating component that will move directly into expended when January 1 hits, and that left another 18% that's allocated, but the contracts are still being processed, and that may have shifted slightly in the quarters since.
Sure. So as of the end of Q3 of our 335 million, I've reported to Treasury that we have spent 174 million and we have obligated 229 million.
Okay.
So about two-thirds-ish.
Yep, okay. And just, because you sort of hinted at it, the changing dynamics on the federal level, at least part of reasons, at least why I can speak from the U R A perspective, one of the reasons why it took so long to get so many of these under contract, because the federal government continued to change the reporting requirements and the usage requirements for these dollars. And so when we thought we literally had a program in place, we now have to change that program and work another two months to set up something. So that's been some of the problem, at least getting it over on the U R A sat. But you, you don't have any fears of having to return any dollars?
No, I don't. We, as we have been doing every six months since the beginning in the Gani administration, we continue to review where we are on, you know, progress towards complete expenditure of the funds. We'll be moving to doing that quarterly in 2024, starting in April. And I anticipate, I do anticipate that there will be some projects or programs that are behind schedule and not going to be able to fully expend their funds by that time, but we intend to then use that as an opportunity to do really hopefully one final reallocation of funds based on the conditions in that moment, with the vast majority of those funds going to quick spending, things like paving, demolitions, landslide remediation, the kinds of projects that we can get under contract and within the balance of that year so that we will not return any funds to the Treasury Department.
Thank you. Madam President?
Ms. Beazka?
Yes.
Okay. I just, just have a few things. I just heard you mention about the, the fund balance, and I think I've mentioned before that there's, I would like to see us take some of the money out of Stop the Violence and put that towards that, but still keep some of the grant funds for Stop the Violence. But one of my concerns has always been that we're not, we're not grant makers, we're not set up to, to do all this stuff with grants, and, and I'm concerned about some of the things that we are doing. And so I wondered if there's a way to like maybe start filtering that out a little bit and work more. I think you do work really well with the nonprofits, the foundations, to do some of those grants. And so I, I do want to say that part, I think you're doing that part, but I, I have concerns with us as a city issuing grants and not being able to follow up. The reporting mechanisms for some of the things, we put something in place for Stop the Violence, and they chose not to use it even though it was legislated. They just determined they weren't going to use it. So that kind of stuff is the thing, that's the stuff that bothers me. If you, if we're asking for reports back for council so that we have some assurance, give us those reports so that we're feeling comfortable in doing some of those things. Maybe we'd feel more comfortable, you know, issuing grants for Stop the Violence or for the other grants that we, you know, that we issue. And it's not, as I mentioned, it's not just Stop the Violence. We actually have, you're working with our budget office and the controllers, correct me if I'm wrong, on the, all the trust funds and trying to identify which ones we can return back to the, to the, to the general budget. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And is there a large amount or, I mean, what's your estimate?
I don't think it will be as large as, as, you know, we might have hoped to, to kind of repurpose, but there are some that certainly have to remain separate out as a custodial fund, if you will. But there are a lot of older, smaller funds that we can return.
Okay. So mostly that's the only thing, the grants have been a big, big concern for me. And I do know that I talked with somebody who was saying that with people who don't pay their taxes, that they, we could collect like millions of dollars more if we issued penalties or collected penalties or something like that, if we had that authority to do that, if we gave you that authority, I think it is, to do that.
We could also, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, I just, I, I, I kind of understand that, like it's, it's hard that we continue to tax the same people over and over again and increase them with library tax, park tax, the royalty transfer tax, you know, all the things we're taxing the same people repeatedly for, and it's just a small percentage of people still paying those taxes. And so I understand you don't want to continue to nickel and dime them to death, but how do you get money from some who can't pay their taxes in the first places? You know, it's just to add a penalty on top of that is just so challenging.
Even, I believe in the same vein, right, but, but not necessarily a penalty, if we had, which is something that, again, Director Ghulab and the finance department are working towards. If we had more, if we were structured in a way that we, we, the city finance department, were able to have a more direct hand in the collection of prior year real estate tax collections and get people onto payment plans in a way that, that we don't do now. Now we only collect current year payments, and then the prior year payments are collected by Jordan Tax Service on behalf of the, the, the taxing district. We're exploring some opportunities that we hope, they're not reflected in this budget, but we hope to bring to council for discussion next year.
Well, that'd be good to see, if people have an opportunity to pay payments, I think that would, that'd be helpful. Okay, I really have nothing else. I, I, I think basically everything I have, I usually come right to you, recall you or something. And I had a good conversation with Patrick, so I appreciate, you know, having the, having the conversations. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Is there anything else for O M B before we go to E L A?
Mr. Chair, I just have a brief comment.
Yes.
Thank you. I think following up on Councilwoman Smith's comments, I was reviewing the LERTA audit from the controller, which council had to, has our co-sponsor resolution to require these reports to council from the city controller on our tax abatement. So these are new construction projects generally where the, we as the city council have allowed the property owners to not pay their property taxes on their newly built building. It was started in 2007. It's quite a complicated set of, of tax abatements and tax credits that are available. They expired and sunsetted in 2017. Council kind of re-upped them for a little while, but then we reconfigured the program and scaled back a bit. But I'm looking at tax abatements that expire in 2024, and that's because they were granted to a new construction in 2014, right? And it's 10 years later. There'll be, I believe, like, you know, almost a million dollars of new tax income that had been discounted for 10 years, that's newly coming online. And in 2025, just from the tax credit abatements, not the tax increment financing, there's over a million, like 1.2 million coming back online. And Councilwoman, it makes me wonder if it's maybe time to take another look and see if some of these projects maybe just shouldn't, don't need to have a tax discount, right? When you're building a $15 million building or $80 million building, the Sure Safe one, we've heard so much testimony about, that building was, you know, project was going to build just $35 million of it was just in the parking structure. Maybe they should be paying their full taxes for the full 10 years because that's, you know, we're first seeing new income off those abatements in 2025 of 1.2 million. That's 1.2 million we didn't get this year and 1.2 million we didn't get last year from buildings that are largely Class A office or high rent apartments. And so it makes me wonder if it's maybe time to look and see whether we're being too generous in the discounts that we're giving some of our tax paying properties. I don't know if you'd like to respond, Director?
I think, I, I don't, I don't have a fulsome response. I, I understand your, the, the question, Councilwoman. I, I always think that reviewing, you know, the way in which we conduct those types of programs is, is a worthwhile endeavor. I do know, in particular at the moment, I guess I would have concerns specifically downtown as we look to promote the repositioning of businesses, of buildings, excuse me, to new uses in, in light of new market conditions. I, I think that the current stability of our program, which was recently for sort of a three-year COVID reaction, joined by the school district and county, will be important for, for that particular subset of the real estate market, but the wider real estate market varies neighborhood by neighborhood, and, and I think there's plenty of opportunity to, to ask those questions, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And I would like to continue, I won't continue today, but it's my understanding from the national market that generally the new construction, Class A, which is why I mentioned it, are not struggling as badly as the, the older buildings, right? And so there may be some nuance to where we are incentivizing, right? We should match our incentives to what we're actually trying to encourage.
Yeah.
And if new construction buildings are not struggling with their revenue, why are we giving them discounts, right? And if the older buildings are struggling, I mean, we just need to readjust. So that's food for thought.
I, I can disagree as, as a data point that it is existing buildings, they're being rehabilitated or retrofitted or, or moving through a change in ownership and use that are having much more significant challenges.
And if I may add real fast for the benefit of the public, when finance is doing its real estate forecast, we are, we know when the TIFs expire, we know when the TRIDS, you know, are coming up. As they return to the tax rolls, those are all included in the forecast. And then just yesterday, the U R A, the city, the county, and the school district had our, our TIF meeting, our most recent TIF meeting, so we have updates on that portfolio. And I know that, you know, that's something that both the administration and council members are, are a part of.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anything else from members? Madam President?
I'm just really briefly going to mention that I had sent a letter about council's salaries, and what I said was, I was trying to keep in line with what we were told from the law department that we should do with our salaries, and the mayor's office declined that. And so I just want to give you a chance to talk a little bit about it, but I really want to say that we're probably going to amend it ourselves. But, but I want to explain why, and I'll explain why then too. But it is what our understanding is of the law and that we cannot diminish our salary. So by not taking it, we're diminishing our salary if we don't follow what the law said initially. So the, and I don't want to get into the whole legal part because I'm not an attorney, but I just, it's my understanding of what we were told by.
I don't, I don't, I don't have that understanding, but I'm, I'm not suggesting that I have a different understanding either. I, the, the point you're raising about diminishment is not something that I had heard before, and so I'd have to consult with the law department to get a better understanding there. My understanding is that the salaries can't be reduced, but that, that that's different than the question of raising it. But again, I, I don't want to, I don't want to give an opinion on that that's not accurate, and I'll happily ask about that. The, we applied a standard non-union raise rate across the board, and that's what we decided to include in the, in the mayor's proposal. It is, of course, as I noted in our response, it is, council's entirely council's prerogative there as with any other section to make amendments as you so choose.
And so I'm just going to say for 13 years, council did not take a cost of living increase. And so that's why the salaries are so far behind for where they should be for people in these types of positions and wherever. But, but that there is something from the law department now that we are asked to follow, that's the guideline that I sent, we sent to you from our budget director too, and that. And the, the other part is the part about diminishing. So either way, if we don't do it, we break the law, if we do do it, we break the law. It's like, it's like we're in a, you know, catch 22.
I know that the amount that was included in your letter was consistent with our analysis of what the maximum.
So I do appreciate that analysis.
So I, I do want to make clear that I, I believe that the amount that you included in your letter was consistent with the charter and that no one is questioning that.
Okay. And that was it for me, because I'm just trying to make sure we follow what we were told we should follow.
Okay.
And at the same time, not diminish the salary because then we're not allowed to do that either. So, but anyway, but I just want to bring that up a little bit to let council members know that we are still moving forward in, in some ways. And there's some of us, I, I believe, that cannot vote on it, I, I believe. And I don't, I'll, I won't call them to the table now, but I'll talk to our solicitor and, and our city council solicitor and the city solicitor.
Okay.
To try to get some clarity so that we're doing the things above board in the right way. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for all for, I know you do a ton of work and we give you a hard time. I walked in, I could see everybody's face go, oh no, she's here.
Not at all. Thank you.
But thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I do, I actually, I have, I have some questions about the Stop the Violence Fund, but will you be at that? Because I know there's a special, there's a session, there's a hearing for that specifically. Will you all be at that or should I ask those questions now?
I don't believe any of us were called to that hearing, but we can have someone there. We, we can work with the clerk to make sure that someone's there to answer those questions at that time. It's helpful to do that all in the context of the overall fund. It's, it's, I leave it to you, but we can answer questions about it now or then. We can certainly make sure someone from O M B is, is at the table if, if council is comfortable with that.
Yeah.
To, to answer them all at one time. It's up to you.
Do you have a preference?
I think it's great, let them come to the table.
Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. Then let's do it that way.
Let's put her together.
Okay, if that with that, why don't we move to E L A? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your work. Be safe. Good day. Who is this though?
Equipment Leasing Authority. So I'll ask, um, as you all get situated, I'll ask Director McDevitt to please provide an overview of the Equipment Leasing Authority, and then we'll turn it over to Chief Frank for any and everyone else for any additional comment.
Thanks. So the mission, and I will preface this by this was the mission initial mission statement set up by the Equipment Leasing Authority. It's a little bit outdated, and I'll follow up with that. The Equipment Leasing Authority, or E L A, was incorporated in nineteen eighty to serve as a financing mechanism, enabling the city of Pittsburgh to make major equipment purchases, primarily vehicles. The E L A will would issue bonds, buy the vehicles, hold the title of those vehicles and lease them to the city. Lease payments amortize the bonds. Since its incorporation, the E L A has continued its role as a city's central player in fleet acquisition, maintenance, repair and replacement. So just to backtrack a little bit, the E L A used to issue bonds and the city would basically transfer money to them to amort to to make the lease payments. The E L A no longer issues its own debt. They they get their funding straight from the city each year to acquire their vehicles. The E L A is composed of five members, three of them appointed by the mayor and two appointed by council. Uh, currently Councilman Coghill and myself reside on the E L I A board along with Chief Frank, who is with us today. Um, and just a quick, a little bit about the acquisition, the E L A has allocated about eight point seven million dollars in Pago funding, a little over seven hundred thousand dollars from the parks tax from Parks Trust Fund. And there's three million dollars allocated in the Public Safety Administration operating budget in twenty twenty four. Uh, some of those deliverables include rat packers for D P W. There is two parks cars from the Parks Trust Fund, two parks compact trucks in the Parks Trust Fund, and six parks crew cab one ton dump trucks in the Parks Tax Trust Fund, uh, along with some other additional parks rat packers and recycling packers and refuse packers. Um, in EMS, there are two ALS ambulances and three mini rescue trucks. Fire has an aerial ladder truck, two pumpers and lease payments that were already approved previously by council for four pumpers and, uh, other fire trucks. And then there's also the the money in the Public Safety Admin budget goes towards police vehicles, which I believe there will be around fifty of those.
Police vehicles?
Yes.
Fifty?
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Chief Frank?
Okay. I don't know that I have a lot to ask. I mean, be interested to see what people's questions are or what what you'd like to know more about, I think. Sort of hit it all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warburton?
Yeah, I just have one. So, you know, we had these internal briefings earlier. Um, and, uh, Chief Gilchrist from EMS made an extremely compelling case for their need, you know, quite literally ambulances breaking down with patients in them. Uh, so my primary question is, I mean, have have you checked in with her and is this is this? Does she feel that this is going to help solve their problem?
For the coming year? Yeah, yes, yes, and yes, and 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 yet another yes. I mean, the, um, I think, um, when we had a I think it was a post agenda, I think Councilman Coghill did a post agenda, and if you remember, Brandon came at that time with, uh, what would we have to do to over time move the state of our fleet to what you would consider, you know, the right age, good average age and good repair and so on. And depending on what year you were looking at, they're twenty million dollars a year, eighteen million dollars a year. Those are the kinds of numbers that we would need to get to a position where there would never be a Chief Gilchrist saying yikes or a Chief Kokila saying yikes or a Director Schmidt saying yikes or a Chief Hornstein saying yikes. So I I mean, we hear that and and we really try. I think the good thing about the composition of the E L A is that it really puts the kind of major purchasers of vehicles all into conversation and every, you know, with with Brandon's help, with Jen's help, try to look at the biggest worst and the next biggest worst and really try to move the funds around that we have to to make sure that everybody is moving in as as good a direction as we can help them to move. So so of of course, we've talked to Chief Gilchrist and and to all of the chiefs and to everybody who uses the vehicles and really just trying to keep everybody, you know, moving and as safe as and our residents as safe as we can, allocating the money as as best as we can and thinking to some extent also about lead times like a fire truck is now like a four year operation. So if we're looking ahead, you know, we got to invest it now, even though we might not see it delivered for a long time. So those are some of the other considerations. None of our chiefs or 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 directors like this, but all of them are aware of it and all of them have had input into it. Is that fair, Brandon?
So I mean, I get well, I mean, I can I guess I can ask her at their budget hearing too, but I it was just very compelling. I mean, you know, we've heard from police and fire and EMS, and I really have to say that the case that that Chief Gilchrist made was strong for for really jumping in and helping out EMS in terms of, you know, what needs to happen now. I mean, I don't know, the idea of an ambulance breaking down and it sounded like it didn't just happen once. It didn't sound like a one off situation. It sounded like something that is kind of a continuous concern. At any rate, okay. I guess the other question, I I guess I'm just a little bit curious. Just so how does the how does the authority work with the departments just in terms of like coming up with a plan and like matching that to their plan and that that type? Just I'm just curious about the the process each year or or?
Yeah, sure.
So each year we meet with all of the bureaus and department directors. They present what they um, need operationally, um, and then any additional requests, and then we submit them as capital budget requests, each individual piece of equipment that the departments and directors ask for. So they have full input on everything that's that's requested.
So, oh, so you request everything that they so so they they come up with their like
We request all twenty million.
Their full wish list and and you, okay, and then you request the whole thing. And then what? It's O M B then that goes through? So then how how is it decided? Like what? I mean, with all this planning
The capital scoring committee goes through with every every, you know, vehicles and the parks and, you know, all of the different projects and they that committee scores, C P F C?
C P F C, the Capital Program Facilitation Committee. So actually, me and Ria serve on that committee. So along with every, as as Chief Holzinger was saying, every parks facility upgrade, every park reconstruction, every um, public safety facility upgrade, there's, um, proposals for all of those, and there's a proposal for each individual vehicle purchase. So we go over all those and we score those. And then those recommendations are sent to the mayor's office and then the mayor kind of cuts down as as they can to see what they can fit into the capital budget.
And so how with that scoring process is that? Like, where does it come into play the sort of ti, you know, the the time of like, you know, it takes this many years or like this vehicle is this old and then we'll want to order for the, you know, that that kind of long term planning? Is that happened with you and the departments together?
So I try to submit as much documentation, excuse me, and information as possible with each capital request. So the amount of downtime that a vehicle's had, the cost of maintenance, the expected life, expected turnaround time for order to receive the piece of equipment. And and it's all submitted with it so that they have plenty of information while they're considering the scoring.
Okay, so okay, sounds good. And so so then in that case, I mean, are there are there challenges in aligning with this departments? I mean, it doesn't seem like there would be if you're making the if you're requesting everything.
The departments, um, their 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 ten year plan is very close to to the fleet ten year plan, and fleets is obviously based on, you know, life expectancy of vehicles and, uh, you know, maintenance impacts. Uh, but but each individual department, their ten year plan matches pretty closely. So, yes, we we usually submit everything that they ask for.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This doesn't show, um, in years out, does it? But can you speak to, you know, in terms of funding for the for the E L A in future years and you know, does someone have those numbers? Actually, Peter, do you have the numbers that goes from you know, this year? And like the five year?
Yes, if you will allow me to look this up real quick.
The question that I'm gonna ask is just, you know, what's the plan? Like, are we doing enough upfront now to to, you know,
No, unfortunately, no. Um, and also one thing you'll notice in the operating budget in the transfers out in the outer years, the Pago, um, funding drops significantly. And, uh, the vast majority of the funding that the E L A gets is from Pago and next year, next year we have the the nine and a half million in in capital, but in twenty twenty five, that drops down to two and a half million. Again, these are projections, hopefully the
I'm sorry, say that again.
Two and a half million in twenty twenty five.
And right now it's?
Nine and a half million, and that's capital. So there will be additional money from the operating budget that pays for for police vehicles because those technically can't be considered capital equipment because they're used so much that they just don't last long enough. So the it does drip significantly, but you know, hopefully in the outer years, the fund balance is healthier than what's projected and we'll have more funding available to shift to Pago. But right now, uh, projected two and a half million in capital dollars.
Which will, most of that will be going to pay current lease obligations. So it's gonna be it's gonna be rough the next few years. The 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 fleet is gonna go through exactly the same window as, you know, every everything else in the city budget that that, you know, I heard you discussing with Councilwoman Lovell, the you know, our but goes like this, debt payments go like this. So we have those, you know, we have those tough out years coming and it affects fleet as much as it affects, I mean, just affects everything. So, you know, that's that's something we're gonna have to address going forward and look at grant funding opportunities and and other ways to to get some revenue in there for our fleet. We're in dire straits.
You tell me about this parks car. All different tone, yeah. Parks car, the parks, sounds like a fun car.
So I I believe what you're referencing it, yeah. So that is an inspector position, I believe, that the Parks Maintenance Team is adding?
Like to inspect playgrounds or?
I'm not I'm not sure exactly. The the exact position. There were a lot of, uh, capital requests that we went through. Uh, I'd have to dig back through some notes.
What's the amount of, I think it's on the parks tax. But what's the amount of funds that go from parks tax to the E L A?
Seven hundred and sixteen thousand.
And the ones that were purchased purchased out last year with the parks tax money, did they all come in?
They haven't received all of them yet, but they've all been ordered. There's been some serious delays with Ford and some of the other suppliers.
Wait, I'm sorry, some of them came in?
Some of them did come in and we're waiting on some others.
Like, what's the breakdown?
Um, we received all of the pickup trucks that were ordered. We're waiting on the supervisor vehicles that were ordered. Those were delayed by Ford, um, and we're waiting on some dump trucks that were ordered, and those are also delayed by Ford.
And who are we gonna order from here?
Um, we, the majority of our trucks are Fords. It's it's good for a standardization. You know, not having to to stock as many parts. We have really good support when it comes to Ford parts. But we always, um, reach out to all three of the big vendors to to make sure we're getting the the best price for what we need. Ford usually is, um, the, uh, lowest. And the other two, there's not really a good support system for Chrysler, so we try to stay away from their products when we can. And, um, G M is on a new allocation system, so, um, they ask you for a purchase order and then they let you know six months later if they'll fill it.
Okay. Thanks for asking. Thanks for answering those questions. I I might have missed this.
I I don't know if this helps or not, Councilwoman Wilson, but it this this issue is not unique to the city. This is this is, you know, national supply chain issues and in part due to the influx of funding that had everybody jumping and making orders all at the same time, and that created some of the clogs because there wasn't really capacity to to kind of meet that sudden demand, but also because there's a demand that's gonna drop off. So there was not tremendous incentive to build out capacity to meet that sudden demand. So this is this is something that's pretty it's just really widespread and typical. And and if you get lucky, you're kind of near the front of the line. And and I will say that, you know, I think the E L team, A L I team works really, really hard to make sure that we are staying on top of opportunities to jump the line, to get the order in so that we get more rapid delivery. I I get a fair number of techs saying, no, today, we have to, we have to make this decision today. So we are, you know. Yeah, the ordering ordering windows are very short. Sometimes they're only open for hours.
You know, somebody missed this, uh, if someone asked this question about why the the lease on the pumper versus buying them?
The idea was to get more vehicles now as opposed to, um, later, uh, the the turnaround time on
The turnaround time?
As Chief Frank stated, is up to four years now.
Okay.
It also allowed us to like get a whole bunch at once without having to pay for all of them at once. So we were able to like make those payments over a number of years because we couldn't afford to make it in one year.
For the pump for the pumper trucks? For the lease or the purchase?
For the lease. I mean, that's why we're able to to get as many as one time, just because
I know what I want to talk about. I don't know why I'm let me just finish up on this pump release. So the pump release is, um, how quick will we get them then?
So we order, um, those four were ordered last year, that pump release. They're coming. They should be here within the next six months, we expect. The fire department's going to
So these four were from last year?
This is a lease payment, yes.
Oh, because we have to pay every year.
Yes, yeah.
That's why it shows up. It's not new. Sorry, the bullet point is very
Understood.
You know, it's bullet points just as four pumper lease. So, all right, that makes sense. Street sweepers. Now, whenever I came into office, we were leasing them because we didn't want them to break down. Or they broke that because they had, you know, good history of good reputation of breaking down. And then it was they were hard to fix or we, since we were responsible to get them fixed, so we went with a lease. And I recently learned that we then I might have missed this last budget season, but we bought the ones that we were leasing. So now we're owning again?
So we always lease to own. We we haven't done any leases where we turn them turn them back in at the end of the lease. So that that was kind of the idea behind the same idea behind the street sweepers that we have behind the pumpers is we really needed them. So, uh, we leased them so we could get more upfront and pay for them later.
So how much is the lease every year, one street sweeper?
It was around two hundred and twenty thousand. I haven't priced a street sweeper, um, in about a year, but we we expect they're right around three hundred thousand apiece. So the lease payment would be somewhere close to that.
Wait, you're saying the lease is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year?
That's what it was. So the the street sweepers were two hundred and twenty thousand apiece. We apiece. We leased three of them for three years and the lease payment was like two twenty-six, two hundred and twenty-six thousand a year. So-
Spread out.
Spread out over three years.
So it's basically a loan. We're not renting them.
Right.
We're paying, we're financing-
We're leasing them.
And then at the, once we pay the, the lease is off, we own the equipment. So it's a financing mechanism. We're not actually, we're not renting them. We're not borrowing them. They are our equipment.
Well, street sweeping has been, on top of, it always comes up at all neighborhood meetings because it doesn't happen.
Has to do with-
Frequently.
How those, how those requests score against all of the other capital projects. And they, they don't score high as other requests.
Street sweeping doesn't score as high as?
Ambulances, yeah.
Yeah, it just causes, you know, everyone's gotta get out with their car. I think, I think they don't care, but then that doesn't happen. I'm sure some of us live in those areas. I don't live in a street sweeper. I'm not on a street sweeper's street. But, yeah, I mean, I'd like to really figure out a strategy to, to understand, you know, how this can be, I don't know, how there can be some resolution to what's been happening because, you know, I mean, do we have ones that break down more in one area of the city versus others? And, and like, how can we get to more of a, say if that's true, because I, I've heard that that's true, but I don't want to speculate too much.
It, it's possible that some break down in certain areas, but I don't, I don't think it has anything to do with the areas much as it does the age of the fleet. They're just very old. I mean, we have some street sweepers out there that are over ten years old still. Street sweepers are really, you know, five, six-year asset.
I hear it's also a staffing problem too. Not that we don't have the staff, but that it only pays fifty cents more an hour to run a street sweeper versus, you know, to be a driver for one of the trucks.
I can't speak to that side of it.
I know, it's a different side. But what I'm bringing up is just, you know, that could be a contract thing in the future. I'm not sure, but from, you know, anyway, that's a more complex conversation than just like, hey, why don't you buy one more street sweeper?
And I wonder if it would be useful, and I actually don't know, Brandon, maybe you did share this with everybody, but this, this, this one I think is, this is a place where I don't actually think we lack for analysis or, or lack for an understanding of, you know, what are the causes of things breaking down, which is mostly age relative. And we've got a lot of data because when you bring something in for repairs, you learn about what was its repairs. I think, I think this one boils down pretty quickly to, to resources. And I think it might be worth sharing your perfect world scenario. So, so if people don't already have it, you can get a sense of the difference between what we're funding and what ideally we would fund were we to get to a place where all city vehicles were, you know, on a-
Less than ten years old.
Yeah, essentially, less than ten years old, on that kind of schedule. And I, and I appreciate your point because, you know, a pumper or an ambulance or a, I think the one thing that we're doing relatively well, given the sort of scarcity of, of funds, is to try to strike that balance and to have those conversations with our directors so that everybody's able to see the big picture, try to make sure that our emergency vehicles are, you know, those are the things we really have to think about first and make, you know, that's, that's why we, I don't know, we bought a used fire truck at one point because you just gotta have the right, two of them. You gotta have the right number of those things. And, you know, to, I would say that the conversation is the right conversation. I think we have the analysis and I think, so if we were, the strategy that we would need to develop is essentially a funding strategy.
And I think also like when Director Hornstein is looking at his fleet, he's probably more concerned with snow plows as a priority and plowing trucks over street sweepers. When he, you know, I need five million dollars worth of stuff, you're getting one. When he reprioritizes, you know, he has to look overall as well.
Yeah, just as there's other, you know, with this one, I get it. An ambulance is more important than a street sweeper. No, no argument there. He said that this one, there's a lot tied to it, you know, people, residents move the cars. And also the, the parking authority is notified as well in the morning, like, hey, it's not happening. And so that's too, you know, it's too late to let the public know that it's not gonna happen in a certain area if something could ever be devised. But I guess what I'm saying is like, it's way more complex for just this. It's not just scratching out one and doing this. It's, it's more involved. So I'm willing, I'm interested to have the conversation because I represent a fair amount of neighborhoods who have, haven't had it on a frequent basis. And so it continually comes up and like everything, you know, that you want to work on in life, you want to come to some resolution to, to, you know, so that there's some resolve to it. So anyway, I'll, let someone else speak. I'm finished. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam President?
Thank you. I just have a few questions. The, all the park tax money that's being used on the vehicles and, you know, when we, when that happened, the public was told that the money would be going mostly to the parks itself and actual projects. So I just want to say I have a concern with that much money and that many vehicles, not just coming from the park tax. I understand you can't do the work if you don't have the vehicles, but that's true for all of our departments. And so I don't know why this is getting, you know, that, this, this type of funding and this much at this time. And I'm just wondering if you ever asked the RAD or somebody else to?
They have used RAD money for, for vehicles in the past, but that, that's even trickier because you have to make sure that those are exclusively used just in RAD parks.
Okay, and we don't make them just exclusive with the park tax?
No, and with the park tax, I mean, we have a lot more just general parks than we have RAD parks. So it makes us, it's a little bit more flexible. Yeah, it's, we're a little bit more flexible, so it's a little bit easier.
I'm just, I'm just gonna say, because I, not that I, because I understand you need the vehicles to do the work. And I did say that to the media one day, but they only, they kept that part out. But I will say, I did say that. But, so I do understand that, but I'm just overall concerned that we're starting to tap into that so much. And I'm wondering if there's another avenue or something else that we could use. And you're gonna be surprised, but I want to ask about the, well, one I want to ask was there, I asked our director, was there ever an audit, independent audit of the fleet? Because it's, it's hard to prioritize and we're all in here and we all have political jobs, whether we like them or not, whether we say it's political or not. Sometimes politics has to play some role in what our decision-making is. That's my opinion. And so I wonder if there was ever an independent audit of, of the fleet or if it's something that we could even look into, if it'd be something you're open to. That's all. Would it be?
I don't know that it's ever been done in the past, but it's definitely something that-
Yeah, I'm just curious what the cost would be. I mean, would it be the cost of a vehicle, then maybe it's not worth it. But if it's something, I don't know. Those are something-
We could definitely look into it.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing that I'm curious about, what are the fifty police vehicles? Are they all cars?
Mixture of interceptors and this year's motorcycles as well.
Motorcycles, what are interceptors?
The, the police interceptors.
Police cars, okay. Because now somebody had told me that they were purchasing, I think SUVs or some type of other vehicles that they were asking for, for the, I don't know what they call it, Scorpion Squad. I don't know what it's called. The chief doesn't-
I believe it's Street Crimes Unit.
Street Crime Unit, yeah.
Those come out of the Narcotics Trust Fund.
Narcotics Trust Fund, so they will be purchased separately?
Those are, yes, those are, those are not owned by the ELA. They're not, and we don't order them, we don't buy them, we don't have anything to do with those.
Because really I have questions about that whole, that whole, I can't believe this, I have questions about leasing of that. I'm just, I just would like to ask, have clarity myself to make sure that that's-
Yeah, that would be more a question for Director Schmidt and Chief Garode.
So I didn't want to ask, saying, okay, we'll buy the vehicles and it's for something. I'm like, I don't know what they're gonna do.
I'm sure they'd be happy to sit down in your office with you and answer those questions.
Yeah, they're gonna answer them publicly. You know me.
I do.
No, I honestly, I try to ask, I do try to ask, and it just literally, somebody had mentioned it to me and I didn't. So that's it though. And thank you for the work you do with this. I know this is not easy. I mean, this, I mean, it looks like it's so much, but it's really so few vehicles for the need that's out there.
I will say, so that plan has about twelve and a half million dollars between capital and operating in the Parks Trust Fund. And there is a little bit over twenty-six and a half million dollars worth of vehicle requests.
Wow. So I can say, maybe with something we should be talking to, the foundations or other people, could they consider purchasing some of these vehicles? Could, you know, Highmark consider purchasing some of the ambulances or something like, I just think it's worth a conversation. I mean, I sit here and I listen to Councilman Coghill and honest to goodness, he gets money, he gets people to bring costs down all the time with stuff and he, just by asking. And I think, you know, having a phone call from the mayor, I would think people would want to, you know, accommodate him.
I think we're also looking to the state, making, make a request to the state too.
Yeah, but they're still public dollars. So I mean, I wonder if we could use some private dollars and, and something that will last so long for us. That's all.
We'll take it. We'll spend it. We'll happily, happily accept that.
We'll put Director, leave it on that. No, it has to be, I think it has to come from the mayor for it to be, you know, powerful. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much for your work. I appreciate it. I know this is hard. Thank you, Director, for serving on here and Councilman Coghill as well.
Okay. It's probably unfortunately, I really don't have any questions, only because during my time serving on the board, I came to understand the terrific job you do with the extreme limited amount of resources we actually have. The seven hundred sixteen from the Parks Tax, it doesn't really bother me mainly because, yes, you're right, you're correct. A lot of people thought that we would have projects that would go directly into fixing up parks, but part of the plan was also centered around maintenance. And so many of our parks are unmaintained and residents wanted to see that as well. In order to do the maintenance, this also has to happen. So that part I understand. And so unfortunately, the, the other reality is, given where our budget is, the trajectory of our budget, giving them as much as they can now is necessary because we're going to be giving them less in the coming years, which is gonna be problematic. So I just want to thank you for the hard work you all doing based upon the limited resources we actually have as a city to support you.
Also, I will note that we do have a budget hearing specifically for the Parks Tax Trust Fund that actually occurs at the same time as the fourth quarter ELA board meeting. But that will be in early December, so we can have a very robust conversation about all of this and that too.
Thank you for scheduling and suggesting. I think that was you and Councilman Gross, right?
That sounds right.
Yeah, I think. I was like, another meeting?
If there's not anything else from members before recessing, I do simply want to acknowledge that Councilman-elect Bob Sharlin, although not at this table, has been sitting through the hearing. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. With that, motion to recess.
So move.
Oh, second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are, we are in recess.